Council meeting to order today is January 18th and it is 6:06 PM. We got through a little technology issues and we're ready to go. Our first item of business is roll call. All other persons are in attendance with Alder Peterson, Rayom, and Ms. Evansen. They're appearing by Zoom and the other six are in council chambers. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation.
To be in justice for all.
Next item of business is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on December 21st. What are your wishes?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Veneman, second by Bemke. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Aye.
We have Rayom as aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Evansen?
Aye.
That motion carried eight a's, zero n's. Next item is consider approval of Mayor Blazer's appointment of Rick Bender, 45 Pepper Avenue, to the Police and Fire Commission as a regular member to replace Greg Jarabich for the term expiring July 1st, 2023.
No move.
We have a motion by Rayom.
Second.
Second by Bemke.
Is Mr. Bender here?
No, he is not. Any further questions?
Mayor, I do, um, can you, how do you choose the appointments of those committees? Or how does someone step forward and say that they would just like to be on that committee? Or?
Yeah, we have a process where you can go online to sign up for committees. However, with, with the Police and Fire Commission, we usually try to find an attorney. And since Mr. Jarabich was an attorney, we kind of brainstormed who lived, what residents were in the community that were attorneys. And I asked Mr. Bender if he would like the appointment.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Aye.
And then who else we missed? Oh, Patrick. There we go. That motion carried eight a's, zero n's. What I'll do is, as we had done in the past, I'll have everybody get their vote recorded here and then I'll call for, for you to on Zoom what you choose to vote for. And also I forgot to remind everybody.
Okay.
Make sure you have your mics on. If I don't think you do, I'll make sure to remind you. And then another problem is you need to talk into the mic and not like turn your head and talk because it doesn't always get picked up then. So if I point that out, I just want to make sure everybody online can hear. We are on to item six, which is to consider a resolution declaring World Magatory Bird Day in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. We have three representatives here who support, who have been, I guess, the leaders, the spokespersons for the Magatory Birds. And they would like to address the council. You're good with that? Make sure that, there you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wayland. I'm a resident of the city. I live on the west side, proud west sider. I just want to, you know, draw your attention. I mean, most of you have seen this before and read through. I did send a letter out, kind of outlining what we do as a bird city in Wisconsin Rapids and how we meet the criteria. We're actually considered a high flyer because our community, actually the things that we, that we draw together, you know, make extra criteria and stuff. Obviously, there's more that we could do. And if you ever want some ideas, please feel free to let us know. Because being a bird friendly community is obviously just good for our community, good for, you know, there's a lot of new birders out there. We had programs at the Kiwanis Youth Outdoor Day. Lots of, you know, families and people are really, you know, interested in birds. We also had a program through the Wisconsin Rapids Zoo, through Parks and Rec's program this year. And, you know, it's just kind of fun to point out to people, you know, the different species that we get to enjoy every day, you know, here in Wisconsin Rapids. And, you know, so we appreciate your support and thank you. If you have any other questions and that, please feel to reach out to us anytime. We're always happy to, to share a little bit more about what we do and to work with the city to, you know, promote birds and, you know, any kind of way to help out with that. So, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. What are your wishes? Go ahead.
I was just going to ask her if you could describe a little bit what you guys do as a group and then you mentioned there's things we could do. What would be the number one thing on that list?
The number one thing that we could do in Wisconsin Rapids, kind of wishes. Right now, we're, we're really concerned about the, we have, there's a lot of birds that are insectivores, that eat insects. And a lot of those birds unfortunately are being poisoned because the insects that they're eating are accumulating toxins. And then the birds eat those toxins and, you know, through the insects. And they're, they're actually, we have a lot of birds that are just dying off. And we've seen that through our bird counts and things like that, that there's, there's a lot of species that are being, that are struggling. That's the number one thing. And we are kind of going to be working with Clean Green Action to kind of try to educate people with appropriate amounts of pesticide use and insecticide use. You know, there's, there's kind of, you know, some people, it's like, you know, if a little bit is okay, well then, you know, I'll throw, you know, a whole bunch at it. And, you know, that's really not necessary. So that's kind of the number one. And, you know, the city has its own kind of pesticide and, you know, uses and things like that too. So, you know, working with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And what is your, your wishes regarding the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Couldn't tell where the voices come from. Yes. I have a motion by Mr. Katna. And second by Veneman. Is there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
And Ms. Evansen?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight a's, zero n's. We're on to consider the adoption and the action of the planning commission meeting held on January 3rd. The planning commission met on, at 4:00 PM on January 3rd at City Hall Council Chambers. Those in attendance are on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 4:04 PM. The minutes of the last meeting were read and approved. The second item was an update on Vandewall and Associates, the Wisconsin Rapids Recovery and Redevelopment Plan update. Mr. Perkins gave an update and provided a progress update for the redevelopment plan and referenced the consultant's memo, memo, the memo. Item three is Plan 21-1258, Community Development Department. There was a public hearing held on a request for an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, specifically map seven dash two future land use and classifying eight parcels identified from a residential classification to a commercial or mixed use land or classification. A public hearing was held. Connie Saylor spoke on behalf of the Animal Medical Surgical Clinic to, as same with Rose Schutz, representing the architect in favor of the amendment. Nobody spoke against it. There was a question on tax implications to neighboring properties. And there was a motion by Blazer to approve, along with, seconded by Gudrow, to approve the classify, or to change the amendment to the comprehensive plan. And that motion carried six a's, zero n's. Item four is Plan 21-1259, Community Development Department. There was a public hearing and an action, an action on a request from a zoning map amendment to rezone those seven, seven parcels from R2 mixed residential district to B3 neighborhood commercial district. There was a public hearing held on that and Connie Saylor spoke in favor. Nobody spoke against. It was a motion by Daven to approve the zoning map amendment to rezone those seven parcels, which was seconded by Gudrow. That motion carried six a's, zero n's. Item five is Plan 21-1259, Community Development Department, a public hearing and action regarding a request for a zoning map amendment to rezone an unaddressed parcel on 16th Street South from R3 multifamily medium density residential district to a B3 neighborhood commercial district. Their public hearing was open and closed with no one speaking in favor or against. Motion by Austin to approve the request for zoning map amendment, seconded by Daven. That motion carried six a's, zero n's. Item six is Plan 21-1260, Community Development Department, action on a request for an amendment to the city's municipal code, Chapter 46, sign code, to increase the sign height allowance within the institutional I-1 zoning district. Staff gave an update on analysis of sign height maximums in various zoning districts. There was a motion by Gudrow, seconded by Austin, to approve the request for the amendment to the municipal code. That motion carried six zero. Item seven is Plan 21-1261, Community Development, action on a request for an amendment to the city's municipal code, Chapter 46, sign code, to increase the sign size allowance within the mixed use commercial B5 zoning district. Staff provided a summary of the findings and recommendations to the change, changes, motion by Feath and seconded by Daven to approve the request for the amendment to the sign code. That motion carried six zero. Motion by Tal, seconded by Blazer, to adjourn at 5:01 PM. With that, I submit for your review.
Move to approve the report of the planning commission.
Motion by Austin.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Second by Jack. Yep, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, um, items six and seven, I guess, they go, they're, they're together, aren't they, kind of, or?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to address them if I may.
Yep.
And I know we, it was on the agenda last month and it was sent back to the planning commission, uh, this month, early in January. And they changed the height from eight feet to 10 feet. Uh, my, not necessarily that I totally agree with that, but I do have some concerns is that, with that, that the higher we go, that there's, uh, there's, there's not the restriction that's put on of how far that can illuminate or whatever. And, uh, you know, if it'd be a 50 feet, 100 feet, or 75 feet, or in a, like in a, a school zone, or maybe, maybe there is, maybe I'm missing, uh, and I'm going to ask Kyle to speak to this, but, uh, in a hospital setting or a school setting or something where there may not be a residential neighborhood abutting up to it, uh, that may not be of importance, but it'd be to make sure that if, uh, if, uh, the signs are getting too high and there's no restriction on how bright or whatever they can be, uh, I would sure like hope that we're going to, that we'd avoid, um, illuminating the neighborhood, if there, if it was in a residential area, of illuminating the residential area. Uh, so Kyle's on the phone, I think you said, if he could speak to that a little bit, I guess?
Yes, Kyle, did you hear the question?
Yes, I did hear the question. In regards to the item, it has somewhat stemmed from the applicant's interest, the applicant being a gentleman that wants to donate, um, a sign to Assumption High School. And that sign exceeds the height requirement and they pursued a sign exception initially. And planning commission found that there, it was not warranted or that the standards of review were not met. And so staff identified another mechanism for relief ultimately would be a code amendment to the sign code. From staff's perspective, I don't think there's a whole lot of difference between an eight or 10 foot sign. I think there's more of a difference between like a six foot sign at eye level, kind of at, at the person height versus an eight foot sign. But once you get, you know, I think above six feet, whether it's eight, nine, or 10, I don't, I don't think there's a ton of difference. I think there, there could be some difference, however, going from eight to 10 for institutional properties that are adjacent to residences. Because, right, when we think of the I-1 institutional district, think of schools, we think of churches, community centers, and most of those are found within residential neighborhoods or abutting residential districts. And so we actually initially proposed this ordinance amendment with the thought that that a 10 foot sign would be okay if it did not directly abut in R2 residence district. However, at the meeting, because there are, like, like the high school abuts in R2 district, but the, the sign is nowhere near, and I'm talking about Lincoln High, the sign is nowhere near, right, residential homes, it's on the corner of the property. We thought that maybe it would be better to address the lineal separation regarding signs. So if, if, for example, there was a home within 100 foot feet of a 10 foot sign on an institutional district, then they, they would have to reduce the sign height to eight feet. So that, right, the height and the illumination from the sign isn't, you know, negatively impacting that residential homeowner. So that was somewhat proposed and discussed at the planning commission meeting. However, the planning commission acted to forego that differentiation and, and rather approve or recommend just strictly changing it from eight feet to 10 feet. So I think, you know, staff generally may still have that concern in terms of, right, the difference between eight and 10 and its adjacency or proximity to a residential property. And, and may support, right, having maybe a lineal separation of 50 or 100 feet from a residential home rather than a residential district. But again, planning commission's action was, was simply to change it from eight to 10. So that was kind of some history and synopsis of the conversation that occurred. I'd be happy to answer any other questions or provide any other feedback from the planning commission.
Kyle, is there any lumens requirements on the signs?
So we, we have lumens requirements or the measurement of foot candles at the property line for electronic message centers. We do regulate for, for parking in the zoning code and other uses within the zoning code that have to be, I think, one foot candle adjacent to a residential property. So there are some restrictions where we can regulate light intensity at the property line depending on the zoning district. Right now, we do not have a meter to do so. However, I do have a, a meter on order, a light intensity meter on order in the event that we do have to enforce this moving forward. So to answer your question, yes, there, there are some code requirements in place that we could enforce the, the light trespass.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Are you done? I didn't know if Tom was done or not.
Yeah, I was just kind of waiting to.
Go ahead, Sherry, right now I am, yeah.
Okay. Um, I guess I just have a concern. I kind of think what, where Tom was kind of heading is how it stemmed. And I know, Kyle, you just indicated that it was a donation for, um, Assumption High School. So I, I just, I'm just kind of confused. So we made an exception because of the one instance. So it just kind of concerns me if we're going to change ordinance continually based on what one property wants. I mean, if we change the entire ordinance because of one issue, and it sounded, Kyle, and maybe I misunderstood, that you still had some concern going to 10 versus eight. I obviously, I get the difference because it'd be easier to either choose eight or 10 instead of 10 if this, eight if that. So I understand the way that the planning commission went. But it just, it seemed like there's still some reservation perhaps on the community development director as yourself of Boeing 10 feet. And like I said, I just want to express my concern that I hope we're just not changing ordinances all the time just because of one person or one property because that gets very dangerous, if you ask me. And another question, if you could answer, what are the, what are the normal, I mean, I know they're all different, but what's the approximate sign heightage or sign height on Eighth Street, like the businesses that are there?
So I'll, I'll start with the easier of the questions. So Eighth Street is primarily Zone B2, which is our general commercial district. A majority of the signs on Eighth Street are nonconforming. I think most of them either do not meet the five foot setback or exceed the 20 foot height requirement. So with regards to the ordinance, over time, as the businesses change, as the signs continue to be updated, that's when we would, right, hopefully, uh, make the sign conforming for those businesses. But the, the height requirement for that B2 district is 20 feet. With regards to the, the first part of your question, in the memo, we do look at kind of the entirety of the code and how an increase from eight feet to 10 feet would mirror the code. And, and there, there are some districts where it does. For example, in the, in the mixed use commercial district, for a single tenant sign, it's 10 feet. So 10 feet does exist in the code. In the downtown commercial district though, however, it's eight feet. As well as in the neighborhood commercial district, it's eight feet. So those districts, I think, are more intense in nature. They borderline more residential neighborhoods and I think that's why you see the, the reduction from 10 into eight. Personally, I do feel that there are instances, especially when you look at schools and maybe other large institutional uses, government type uses, where you have larger properties that may warrant a larger sign. So again, Lincoln High School, I think, is, is a, is a great example. It sits on a main thoroughfare. It's a very large property. Even some of the elementary schools have larger properties. You look at, you know, the county facilities that are on larger properties. I think, you know, especially those on major thoroughfares, it may warrant a larger sign. So I, I think generally I would support allowing a 10 foot sign in the institutional district. However, in the memo, as we alluded to and I described earlier, I think there is, are still some concerns if you have an institutional use or a sign that is placed within close proximity to a residence, that that sign could be detrimental to that residence, especially given, you know, if it is internally illuminated or if there's an electronic message center associated with that sign. And many institutional uses do have those electronic message centers to display civic events and different, different things going on with whatever that use is. So that's why we, we kind of came up with this hybrid approach where a 10, a 10 foot sign would be permitted in cases where they're not directly adjacent or within a certain amount of feet of a residence. You know, so the high school could potentially conform or, or have a 10 foot sign if it wasn't directly adjacent. Otherwise, all signs that are adjacent to residential homes would have to meet the eight foot requirement.
You're muted, Sherry.
Sorry, I hit the wrong button. Because there's no residence right directly around them, the 10 foot is okay, is what you're saying?
Kyle, you're muted.
Sorry, when I put the, uh, the thing down, it doesn't always unmute. So in this case, correct. I don't think that there is a residence located directly adjacent. There's actually a parcel in between Assumption to the east that they also own. So when you look at the parcels, they're not directly adjacent. But I think looking beyond this case, as you alluded to earlier, we, we've got to protect the, right, the, the city and the residents who, who may, right, the elementary school that might be in a residential neighborhood and surrounded by residences. I would not want to, you know, harm in any way those property owners if a 10 foot sign was proposed in, in a, in a different situation.
And so the 10 foot pole that's being donated, there's no way to cut it down to, to reflect to eight foot, is that correct?
Um, yeah, and I think the, the bigger picture that, that we need to focus on here is, right, how this affects the whole city, not just this previous sign exception, which yes, may have triggered kind of the need for staff to look at this. But I think once we look at the entire city, I think it does make sense to allow for some signage in certain circumstances in the institutional district to be allowed to be 10 feet in height. But to answer your question, yeah, the, the, to go to eight feet from 10 feet would have required significant modifications to the, the design of the sign.
Okay, thank you.
Jake? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Jake, Jake's going to speak and we'll, we'll have you go next, Tom.
And that's, I guess, a concern I have is that, you know, before maybe we, that the final okay or whatever is done is that we, uh, maybe resolve the issue. I think Kyle's getting to the point of, of I, I think what we should be looking at, you know, there, if the 10 foot would be allowed, of third could be allowed. But if, if, uh, if, uh, if it be that, it'd be abutting a residential, uh, neighborhood or something like that, 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 we'd have to have a, should have a struggle at eight foot. And that's why I'm thinking, and I think Kyle was thinking, talking about too, is that, oh, thinking of the, of the city as a whole, not just this one instance, it's this is what we have, what has like, has triggered this thing, uh, with the height that, like, we had just gone through this, I think, the last summer, the ordinance or so. But I, I think before we finalize, finalize this, is that we should, uh, really look at, uh, I guess, the whole picture and that's the, how far, the higher we go with the signs, is, uh, how far are we going to be illuminating, if it's in a residential area, how far we're going to be illuminating the neighborhoods? So that's the, that's, that's the concern I have. I, I said, I raised it from eight to 10 after we just did what we did with the ordinance is one thing. Um, uh, that, that, that being said, I think it's the ordinance is one thing. Um uh that 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 being said, I think it's also said to go with that, if we were to go with that, I think we should look at the, as Kyle's talking about, uh, looking at uh uh restrictions on where that could, not necessarily restrictions on where it could be, but it would maybe wouldn't be restrictions. But uh, as he's mentioned in certain areas, ones with Lincoln High School, is that, you know, it's a big, wide, open area. So, you know, if something happens like that, that uh a ten-foot sign or something uh would fit. And on a on a highway like that, uh versus an eight-foot sign, that ten-foot uh may be more relevant to use. So maybe it might be that uh we finalize this whole thing before we uh the the wording on it, before we give the okay to it. Just a thought that I've had over this.
Thank you. Jake?
Thank you. So this has become far more complicated, in my opinion, than it needs to be. I believe the application for an exception to the ordinance should have just have been approved, but instead, we're stuck here having to change an entire ordinance to give uh Assumption the right to have a sign, which they should. They're a staple in our community. So I I just think this is part of the whole deal, that the council, the elected officials cannot overturn these commission decisions or committee decisions from other parts in the city government. Uh so th- this is the way we gotta do it. It's unfortunate, but this is the way we gotta do it. So I think we move forward, we go with this. My main concern, and the mayor asked it already, would be with the lumens, but I'm glad to hear that we do have a meter on order and we can control that. Otherwise, the difference between eight and ten, I I don't think matters. But if we had a bright sign up there that was glowing into people's windows, I think that'd be an issue. But uh with this, I I think we move forward so that they can move forward with their project. Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
Uh, Mr. Zechter? Oh, I'm sorry. Turned it off real quick on me. Is there any further discussion? So currently, the motion on the floor is to adopt the planning commission report as presented. Can I second it? Good, go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Um. And I know they they've made, this is, I guess, for us to act upon, or it is to act upon. Um and most probably don't want to, I guess, send it back to maybe tidy up uh what uh I've been talking about and Kyle's been talking about. Uh but uh that uh if this was to be if it is, uh I'm assuming it's probably gonna be approved, but uh we could then, or whoever could make a referral back to address the, then it's still gonna be addressed, you know, going over the ordinance again of a of a illuminating into residential areas or whatever. So uh um I'm just wondering if I'm just wondering if these uh maybe shouldn't be held over for one more month to see if we can include something with the language on that to uh and bring it all back as one change. Otherwa- I'm gonna uh, is this a, this being an ordinance change, uh Shane, this would have to have to have a unanimous vote in the first hearing?
That's correct.
Um, so uh if I if I held out, uh I guess, six and seven, and voted no, there'd be second hearing on it, or second reading on it anyway. Uh so I guess, would the council rather just have to go back to the committee commission and see if they could not come up with some verbiage as Kyle has been suggesting to go along with the uh change in height? And they could still come back, they could still come back at the next meeting with that, if they could accomplish that, it'd still come back at our next council meeting to do what could be, if there's an oboe here, uh there'd still be a second, it'd still come back at the sec- at the uh February council meeting for another vote on it anyway. So we, it it was, it's, I'm just at offering a chance for the commission to uh uh clarify uh some language possibly in in that, uh and and bring that back versus sending it back to them with a, just to send it back to them, just to send it back with the, just sending it back to the council because it is a a noble, just be sending it back to us to have another vote on it.
Kyle, or even Ryan, could you correct me if I was wrong, but if I recall, there was a discussion on a number of factors regarding some of these issues regarding the location to a residential district. And the commission did have a conversation, and ultimately, a motion in a second was to approve what's presented here tonight? Was that, Ryan?
Correct. Um, really, it was just a question of the height. Lu- lumens were really never, I mean, Mr. Kearns brought up the brought up the subject once we decided to change in height. But I mean, I, what I would don't understand, and maybe Mr. Kearns can elaborate on, is what the difference would be from eight to ten as far as lumens are concerned, and what the distance requirement would be at that point with that extra two feet. I I don't understand the difference, I guess. And I think that's what, where the confusion lies here with Mr. Rayom, correct?
Correct. Did you catch that, Kyle?
Yeah, um, and so I think to answer that question, and I have another comment afterwards. So I think it's, right, with the zoning standards um regarding illumens or foot candles um at the property line, as well as the separate standards in the sign code regarding electronic message centers, which is a measurement based on the height of the sign, we we have protections in place to ensure that if a if a sign, you know, if if somebody complained for a sign that was too bright, we we could, in the future, go out and measure it uh and enforce um specific cases. I think more so what I'm concerned with is that if you have a dense residential neighborhood and you're permitting a ten-foot sign, um I think, you know, a sign at that height could probably be more of an annoyance to the neighbors um and and more so resemble the commercial character of a commercial corridor um such as that you find on, right, Eighth Street or West Grand Avenue um that are Zone B two. And so, right, not a huge difference, eight to ten feet. Um like I said early on, I think the bigger difference is when you're look, when you're talking about a six-foot to an eight-foot-high sign where you have something at eye level and above, right, you've got to look. And I think an eight-foot sign certainly captures your attention more than a six-foot sign. Um but again, I still think there, it is, it is somewhat concerning that a ten-foot sign is, right, um could be more of an annoyance within a residential neighborhood than an eight-foot sign. But again, protections are in place for us to to regulate the intensity at the at the property line. The other note that I want to mention is that um Item Seven, Item Seven is different from Item Six. So Item Seven, while it is regard is regarding the sign ordinance, it pertains to the mixed-use B five zoning district, and it's regarding wall signage. Um and this is more so a result of us recently adopting a sign code, enforcing the sign code for a couple of months, and then recognizing that there might be some errors or some unique um uh things within the code that should be corrected. So that this this isn't necessarily tied to Item Six regarding the institutional districts that we've we've currently been discussing.
Thank you. We also, Matt?
Just wanna say, uh, this has been going on for quite a few months already, and the gentleman is here uh i- in the audience that is donating the money behind the sign to put this up. And uh I'm sure it's been somewhat frustrating. I just want to say one thing is uh, a gentleman in the community, when he heard what was happening, he went around and measured all the signs for the schools in the community, and they're all between nine and a half and eleven feet wide and tall. And the ordinance in July was actually twelve feet. I could be wrong, but that's what we talked about, was twelve feet. So it went from twelve feet in the same scenario, same uh B one location, I believe, is what Kyle was saying. It went from twelve feet to eight feet. And all the signs that exist out there in this situation are nine and a half feet to eleven and a half feet. Think ultimately, the only reason this was brought here was for the height, which was ten feet. And that's what the commission passed. That's what they, you know, worked through all the ins and outs of it and brought it to us on this agenda. And I, you know, my opinion is, let's pass this and let the sign be, and we'll let Kyle take care of the lumens or candlesticks and uh figure out what's going on there. But let's 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 let uh this happen. It's a great thing for the community, and I have a lot of respect for, you know, the gentleman who's Earl, who's put this up uh for the school. And at this point in time, I guess I would like to say, did you want to say anything?
Make sure you turn, there you go, thank you.
Yes, me and my wife was uh, we do a lot of work at Assumption. And so every city has got a sign for their school. Athens has got a big one. That's where we've seen it. My wife is from Athens, and they had a beautiful sign. And so you you see everybody else has got a sign. Uh if you look at at Lincoln High School, theirs is probably twenty feet high. And you go, and then the Rylander was just a picture on them and and their signs. And so um on the sign from Stratford, sign, it was took, costs a lot of money to to have a design. And the only way you can have electronic one, which you can advertise to, excuse me, the masses and the and the sports and everything that's going on at Assumption, and they have no sign now. And so that electronic part is automatically, it's got, it's almost twenty-eight, twenty-eight inches. And so the bottom is like two feet. And so if you took and tried to chop two feet off of that sign, you'd have the electronics sitting in the snow. And the top is is designed as, I didn't bring it along tonight, but it's a beautiful design of of the sign. And it says on top, uh, uh Assumption Catholic Schools, which includes all the schools, the middle schools and everything. And so uh, there's no sign there now. And if we don't put it up, you'll never see one. And if I got a, there's no way, I spent already, this this whole thing has cost close to thirty thousand dollars. And it was a lot of dollars to design it, a lot of time to design it. And so uh it just won't work at eight feet. You know, you can't run electronics in the in the snow. And on the top of, say, raised uh raised rails. And then on the bottom, uh, two feet in the corner be, uh, there're the lions, you know, and it'd be a beautiful picture of that. And um in big letters, it would say Catholic Assumption Catholic uh Schools. And if you try to shorten the top up, you'd only have uh like a foot. And then there's no way that you can have the letters big enough to even show. You wouldn't be able to see it from ten feet away instead of uh forty feet away. And so it actually would sit in front of the flagpole. And then on each side, it'd be ten, ten feet uh, eleven feet wide, I think it is. And then there's gonna be two lights that'll shine up on the on the flagpole under the flag. Now, the flag has been lit in twenty years. There's no lights or nothing. With landscape nice around it, it would look nice. There's uh, actually, there's no property across the road. There's no houses or nothing. The only thing is got the dental thing, and they got their sign. And this sign at night would be real dim, so it won't bother anybody. And so uh I think it'd be a a great thing towards the school. And so it's hard-earned dollars. I'm I'm investing in it. And uh, actually, the first meeting was on January sixth. We were gonna have it ordered ready. And we didn't know that the ordinance was changed. In two thousand seventeen is when they discussed lowering it from down, uh twelve feet down. And it took three years before July, this two thousand twenty-one, before they drew up the the ordinance on it. And so that would lower it down to eight. And so then we asked for a variance on January sixth. And Kyle says, well, I would just assume, take and put it back up to at least ten feet. And so let's cancel it until uh January third. And then they pass it there, seven to one. Everybody passed it a hundred percent. And so we'd super appreciate it. And I know the school is looking forward to it. And so I'd like to see a hundred percent vote, something towards the city, and it'll be a real thing for for the school. It's a good school. They have, they got good, our two sons went there. And so uh, they got a good study habits. Our two sons got to be uh doctors. And and so we give a lot of scholarships, four-year scholarships to Assumption Medical Kids. And uh, but if this one goes through, I'm not putting up an eight one. They'll never see one. Nobody else is gonna put one up. I can't tell you that. And so uh, I would super appreciate um this being passed tonight because I actually, tomorrow, they wanted to put it on order. And so it's been held up, and everything's been drawn out, and it's a real nice plan. It'll look nice. It's, I think it's a real asset towards the school, into the community. And so, again, I sure hope that it's considered to pass, and I appreciate it for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Earl.
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, 'cause I I don't want to vote against the entire thing. I'll hold out, no, I'd like to hold out number six.
So we already have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yeah.
Just hold on a second. We have some more people that want to speak. So let's.
Okay.
Um, Patrick?
I'd just like to reiterate, I don't know, Tom, if you were able to make it to this meeting. Um, I don't remember seeing you there, but every question that you have was answered at that meeting. And as far as the lumens go, that would be covered by the code that is already in place. So as far as it goes, uh, the commission had talked quite a while on this, and they uh considered many options. And I think this is uh a good option that they came up with.
Um, Dean?
Yeah, I, first of all, I'd like to thank you for all your efforts and your donation to the city. And secondly, um, yeah, I'm along the same lines with Jake. And um, I just to override decisions by the planning commission after they put a lot of time into it, just doesn't seem right at this point. So I would be in favor of passing the entire agenda.
Sounds good. Um, Mr. Rayom, so did you want Item Seven held out regarding, is it six or seven?
Six, I believe. I I mentioned six and seven because I wanted to make sure we, that I addressed the right one. And Kyle clarified it's, it says six. So that's why I just wanted to make sure to address the right one, so.
Okay. And I just need to ask for unanimous consent, if you're willing to hold the item out. So we have a bunch of heads shaking no.
Is is six, six and seven are both ordinances?
Um.
Or is trying to?
Kyle?
What was the question?
Right. Six and seven are both ordinances? Right. Six and seven are both ordinances. So actually, to be, you know, because the votes of each ord, of ordinances, since this is the first reading, are important, I would suggest that they be separated. So that, you know, perhaps one would be unanimous and one would not, and would avoid a second reading.
Does that make sense?
Plus, I don't believe the ordinances were actually part of the planning commission packet at the time either. So this is the, the, or maybe they were, Kyle?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What, whether the actual zoning, I'm sorry, ordinances were part of the, were considered by planning commission?
The, the ordinance document, the word document, was not part of the planning commission packet, but the, ultimately, the, the recommendation and the changes were identified in a staff memo.
I have just one question for Kyle. They indicated that the, the stats or the ordinance changed from 12 feet to eight feet in 2017. Do you have any idea why? I mean, just quick answer, or?
Yeah, so I, I'm not familiar with that. The, the sign code was in place for quite some time and until this last July. And the, the recent rewrite began in 2019, and that took place after the consultant Civitac rewrote our zoning ordinance. And that was adopted in 2018. So thereafter, Civitac started rewriting our sign ordinance under contract. And then there were several changes within the community development department, which somewhat put a hold on the sign code rewrite. We then picked it up last year and got it adopted in July.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just because of some other issue, you know, someone wanted this, so we changed the ordinance to this, and then we changed it to that. But I guess I'm, as long as you're the expert in this, in with, with sign, and you feel confident that, you know, you, like you said, it's not a big difference between the eight and 10. I don't have an issue with it. The only issue I have is that we're just changing ordinances for, you know, one person. And, and that's where this council seems to do a lot in it. It makes me nervous about that. So otherwise, I'll vote for it if, if you think it's right. Thank you.
So I guess back to the original question, on unanimous consent in favor of holding out item six for a separate vote? Is there anyone, are you good with that?
Well, unanimous consent is, to see if, if there's any objection, then it's not unanimous consent. So I guess, if, what, there was objection, is that?
Well, we'll see if there's objection now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm not quite sure what, so is, the sign we're talking about for Assumption, is that under six or seven?
Six.
That's under six?
Correct.
And that's what we, that's what Mr. Raum is wanting to hold out, which means it doesn't pass, it goes back for another month, and, and we start talking about it again?
No, he just wants to hold it out from the vote. And then, because there's another ordinance there too, that he probably, I'm thinking, would vote in favor of, that'll be unanimous, that won't have to come back. It's just because of the, because we require unanimous votes for these first readings. I think he wants to be on the record to know which ordinance he's voting for and which ordinance he is not. And I think that's probably a better way to do it when we have two ordinances in one, in one report, is to vote on them separately.
Okay. Thank you. So is there any objection? No? Okay. So let's hold out item six. And then we have on the balance of the report, we have a motion by Austin, second by Zachary. Is there any further discussion on that? You good? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Patrick?
I'm sorry. I do object to holding out six, because there was a motion and a second for the full report. And then this comes in after the motion and second. I think that that should be voted on as a full report.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, right. And that's why, at that point, the motion became the motion of the whole body. And someone had, which happens on occasion, someone will say, oh, I want to hold out a certain number. And then the mayor will, as an informal action, instead of everyone voting, will say, does anyone have an objection to holding that item out? And if there is no objection, then that item is held out. So that's, that's what we just did now. And he asked if there was any objection, and there wasn't. So now we're, we've moved on to the vote on the balance of the report. Right? You had just called for that. So that's something that, that is, and, and I, and I want you to understand the reason that I am recommending to vote, you know, separately on the two ordinances, is because the, the vote is important on each one to determine whether they require second readings or not.
Because the unanimous vote will not come back again. But if somebody votes against an ordinance, it has to come back for a second reading. Well, yeah, if, yeah. So if they're all tied together as one report, and if somebody votes no on it, they both have to come back. But technically, maybe only one person wants, or somebody wants only one of the ordinances to come back.
I understand that. I'm sorry, it took me a minute to object. You guys move so fast here. Yeah. So I'll withdraw my objection.
Thank you. Right. So we will vote on the report, holding out item six. What? Okay. You confused me. All right. Yes, seven's in it, but six is the sign at Assumption. Seven is a different item regarding well signage.
Got it?
Okay.
According to the report, it's about six.
Correct. So please cast your ballots. Thank you. Ms. Everson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried 8A0As. Now, regarding, regarding item six.
Move to approve.
Motion by Veneman, second, second by Austin. Any further discussion on this item? Yes, Mr. Raum?
Is that the?
Yeah. Otherwise, it has to come back next month for a second reading. Yeah, so all ordinances take the first reading is if it's unanimous, it's good to go, unless it's traffic. And then if it's not unanimous, it has to come back second month for another vote. So a majority by a majority, done. Uh, Mr. Catna?
If it doesn't pass tonight, would it be possible to have a committee of the whole meeting to pass that? No. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Go ahead.
Just a, a comment in regards to a friendly amendment. Could, could a friendly amendment be made? And not, not that I'm suggesting what, but just given the discrepancy here and the difference of opinion, could one be made, for example, to permit a 10-foot sign or an eight-foot sign when, when within 100 feet of a residential building? Rather than right, having to come back, I guess I would, I would entertain as to whether or not there could be additional language added, as we've discussed up to this point, noting that 10 feet is permitted, unless you're within 100 feet of a residential building, in which then the sign has to be reduced to eight feet. And again, if, if, if the majority is, is not fine with that, then, then that's understandable. But just noting that, I think the council has the authority to make a change from the plan commission recommendation as they see fit.
I would agree with that. Sue, what do you think?
I, I think, right, I think that you could change the ordinance to do that if you want. And I guess if that's in the, in the spirit of attempting to get a unanimous vote, I am assuming that's why it's, it's being raised. And I think then we would just add to the ordinance where it says maximum height 10 feet, or eight feet if within 100 feet of a, of a residence. So are you measuring from the house? Are you measuring, measuring from the property line of a residential parcel? What would that be, Kyle?
I, I think I would suggest from a residential building, or like a residence, not, not a residential zoning district, because in the case of, you know, Lincoln High, I think it does border a residential district across, across the street. And I don't think in, in that case, right with a, a road width of 66 feet, a 25-foot setback, a sign setback of five feet, I don't think it would be necessary to apply in that instance. So I think, again, as I alluded to at plan commission, perhaps 100 feet from a residential structure, residential building, measured from the location of the sign, would be appropriate.
So I guess we're at the point, it's up to the body whether or not they want to...
I could add that to my...
...amend the motion. And whether or not that will pass unanimously, we don't know. I got Mr. Delaney.
This option was talked about at the planning commission, and the planning commission decided not to do this. So I'm for what the planning commission has presented us with tonight.
Go ahead, Mr. Catna.
I would pose the question to Mr. Raum on what terms would he move forward with this tonight?
Did you hear that question?
I could, I could, I think, as Kyle described it there, I think it's a 100-foot residential building base, that that would be somewhat going, I think, to what I, at least I was trying to get at, in a residential neighborhood area, and that, so that I, I could, I could, would accept that. It's not the, the motion I made, so I can't, or the second, I didn't make motion or second, so somebody else would have to accept that or add that to the motion. So I could, I could accept that and vote for it.
I'd be willing to amend my motion to that.
And Mr. Austin, you'd be willing to second that amendment?
I'd second that.
Yeah, it's a good question.
And, and then?
Go ahead, Sue.
Right. Since there was not, so you tried, you did unanimous consent, why don't you try that, see if there's any objection, and then?
Oh, okay. So is there unanimous consent to change the motion to what was stated? Anybody object? So we have one objection.
Two objections.
Mr. Delaney and Mr. Zachary.
One on the floor.
It's not going to pass either. Good, Patrick?
Okay. So I really don't understand how the city can say, well, we'll just change the ordinance to allow this, which I think was the right thing to do. But when, when a variance was requested, why that wasn't even looked at by Kyle Kearns? And I know it had gone through the, the first time, and it didn't pass. And why the second time, this gentleman says that he came back and Kyle had said that they're going to change the ordinance. I don't see how, like, that doesn't make sense to me, why that wasn't looked at as a separate, a separate thing. Because they did talk at the commission about, why would we change the ordinance for just one person? Are we doing it for one person? Are we doing it for multiple people in the future? And if there's going to be a lot of these, let's just go ahead and change the ordinance. So to me, it makes sense, what they decided on. I think that with the way things went, this is dragging out way too long. And I think we should just pass it. That's, that's my personal opinion.
Mr. Zachary?
Kind of reiterating, like, we went through this whole process already, and everybody's agreed on it. Everybody's been through it. We were at the meetings. It's all been talked about already. And all we're saying is we're changing the sign height from, from, we did from 12 down to eight for, we don't even know why we did it, because another company did it without us really knowing it. And then we have this sign come up, and we're like, oh, it's eight feet. Eight feet's really nothing. We can't really put that in front of a school, because it's too small. So everybody's saying, let's put it at 10 feet. We'll take care of the lumens. Everything else is good. All we're saying here is, we want to change it from eight feet to 10 feet. That's all we're saying. I don't understand why we're talking about bringing it back somewhere else, or holding it out, or, and, and why are we even having the commission talk this stuff through and go through all this, just to do this tonight? I don't understand that. And, and I don't think we're a, a council that does, you know, what, like favors for one person, or ones, you know, one here, one there. When we're asked to change an ordinance, then we look at making changes to that ordinance. When we're asked to, you know, will this work for one person or not, then we look at making that. But we're certainly not a council that's saying, oh, this one person, like, this is our buddy, and we want to do this for them. This is the right thing to do. And the fact that we're looking at delaying it further is, is beyond me as a council or as a city at this point. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this wouldn't be delaying it. This is a compromise if the amendment were to go with the motion that would get unanimous approval tonight and move it forward. Is that correct? Possibly.
If it gets unanimous approval.
Right. So I, I mean, there's a compromise on the floor. I think that if we don't meet that compromise, that's what's going to delay it further. I mean, the compromise tonight moves this project forward. If we don't go forward with the compromise, then it goes back.
Go ahead, Patrick.
This compromise was already discussed at the meeting for quite some time. They had discussed this very same idea. And they decided not to include this on their, with their changes. And they, also, if you would watch at the meeting, they discussed the reasons why. And there's very good reasons why not to do what is being suggested. So they, I, in my view, they came to the right conclusion. And to go back and not, and to go against what they had said, I think is wrong.
So we're back to the original motion to approve the planning commission agenda report as is.
Number six.
Number six. Go ahead.
First of all, if I understand this correctly, if this doesn't have unanimous consent tonight, it'll come back for a second vote. So as long as we have a majority tonight, and a majority the second time, this will pass, correct?
Correct.
Right.
So I guess my question would be to the gentleman that purchased the sign, which thank you for doing that, and sorry for putting you through this, but will one month make a difference?
Earl, were you able to hear that question? He's got a question for you.
So if you unders, if you heard and understood, and I think I understand now, but...
You can't hear back here with the speakers. So I, I missed out on half of it. Maybe I got the ears, but it's not that bad.
I apologize.
Sure. No, I appreciate it.
So what's, what looks like is going to happen tonight is, we're going to vote on this. If we don't have unanimous consent, it'll go back for a second vote next month. My question to you is, I'm assuming we're going to... My question to you is, I'm assuming we're gonna have a majority here tonight. We'll have a majority for the second vote on this. Will the one month difference be that big a deal to you?
Yes, it will. I was here for three meetings and they could've made a variance the first time in, in this situation. And Kyle wanted to make it a permanent because they lowered it from 12 to eight and he says that was way too much. And that was in 2017. And he said he was short on help, it didn't get written up until July of this year. And we had no idea it was down to eight. Stratford didn't know it was down to eight. Nobody knew it was down to eight. And the reason that, you know, first of all, we, me and the wife went to Athens to find out what the price was gonna be and if we could afford it and if we could do it. And so Kyle says, yeah, we-
Earl, is your microphone on, Earl?
But I'm, if we gotta wait another month, forget it. You'll never see a sign there. I'm not, they were gonna have it in ready. They put them in all winter long and, and he's got it ready to go tomorrow morning to, to, he's got it made out the email to, to carry the, to get a sign to, to get the permit. And what I mean, if it's just difficult to get a sign at, at a, at a school when every school in the, in the state has got a, got a sign for their school and we in Wisconsin Rapids can't, can't decide after four meetings that they have it. I mean, I, I didn't hear all the discussion, but it's just kinda, it's kinda downhearted. Now, if I gotta wait for another meeting, another meeting, maybe we'll, we'll do our, do something, someplace else. I've been, I've been a landlord here in, in Wisconsin-
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
He doesn't have the floor.
Tom, Earl speaking.
Oh, I, I thought he quit. I thought he quit.
Not a problem. Nope. I'll let you know when he's done. Go ahead, Earl. I guess he's done. Uh, Mr. Raome?
What is the, I guess what is the question? They want to postpone for another month?
Hold on a second, Tom.
Sue, Sue, could you explain the process, please?
So what we did, Mr. Haves, is because your, the exception was not granted at the last meeting, so now we're, we've changed the ordinance, okay? But it requires two readings. So tonight is the first reading and then next month would be the next, the second reading. Unless it passes unanimously tonight, which I'm not sure whether it will or not. If it passes unanimously tonight, everybody votes for it, then you'll get your, your, your signed permit probably tomorrow morning. Otherwise, you would have to wait till February 15th or something like that, 18th? February 15th. Because we require two, two readings for ordinances. But you wouldn't, you wouldn't probably, well, maybe you want to come back for that meeting, but it's more of a formality to have it be, have two readings. Because we just can't pass an ordinance that, that people are just seeing at, you know, tonight unless it's unanimous. So it would be probably four weeks from tonight, you would get your approval if it's not unanimous tonight.
I guess me and Stratford were both under, understanding about it. Voted last week, or I mean, January 3rd, 100% voted then to, to pass it on to this committee. We sure thought that was gonna pass and so-
Right. I'm sorry about that. Because of, it's an ordinance change, our rules require two readings unless it's unanimous the first time. So we haven't, they haven't voted yet, but I'm just-
Does it happen with everything?
Uh, other than traffic and parking, ordinances can be passed at their first reading.
So was it going back again to the-
No, it won't go back to planning. It will just come back to these gentlemen again and lady at their next council meeting.
Unless it passes.
Unless it passes unanimously tonight. And then it will be done in four, in four weeks, either tonight or in four weeks, but-
It's interesting how the city operates.
Well, these are rules that we've had for a long time, so I'm sorry. I, I appreciate your, your, your passion for assumption.
I'll tell Stratford to send my, half of my deposit back and, and that'll be it.
Go ahead, Mr. Raome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I think a few are getting a lesson on how government operates and they don't like it. Well, this is what it is. Takes two readings. We've gone through the discussion. I offered one way to go back without a second reading, or to the planning commission, that they take another look at it and change the verbiage in there. That wasn't liked. So then I had to hold it out to have a, a vote no, so then just go back for a second vote, which will change the verbiage, verbiage either in it. But then it was brought up to a friendly amendment, but that, that wasn't agreed to. And it's been stated that that was talked about at the planning commission meeting that wasn't done. I agreed to the amendment just that would be put in. That's how, that's how we work. There's rules on how we do things. And that's why, that's how it's done. Isn't that we just pick some way to operate? That's why we have it in writing. That's why ordinances are in writing. That's why ordinances are there and if somebody wants to change it, then they have to appeal to that to make the change. If somebody doesn't, if somebody does something and they don't know what the height was or is in the ordinance, whose fault is it? Maybe it was that 10 years ago or five years ago. But somewhere along the line, things change. Everything doesn't stay the same forever. For reasons unbeknownst at times. Ordinance gets changed. Stop signs get changed. Parking signs get changed. Witches streets get changed. And it takes the discussion. And that's why we're here tonight. That's why I'm glad for, to have my right to stand up for my constituents. This doesn't fall in my area, but by speaking up, I'm speaking up for my constituents. Because if this would happen there. Friendly amendment was offered. It was offered and then it was offered by, asked of me if I would accept that. I, I agree. It's a compromise. Move on. Motion here on the second of the motion, agreed with that. We could've had the vote. I do believe it would've passed. And that would've settled it for this evening. There wouldn't have been another vote. So thank everybody. A good hard look at how government operates. It isn't just necessarily the government that's wrong, the people in the government that are wrong. Rules for what we have to do. Because somebody makes a decision, but a final decision goes to somebody else, that doesn't mean that finally says, he just rolls over and says what the first one said was That's why we're the council people. We were the elected people to make decisions. We can make exceptions if we want to at times. I think it's been well explained that the difference from going to eight to 10. I think Kyle did a good job on that even when he mentioned six feet. Be more towards eye level and you go to eight and start looking up and 10 is up. But I think it's at the point where to live with that. But it's the rest of the problem to resolve with it. It's not just the height, as I'm seeing it this evening. So I, if it, if this is how it's, this is how it is, I, I'll offer another chance. If the people agree to a friendly, friendly amendment, it would still be there. And if there's no objections, they want to reconsider that, I would accept that. If not, and it goes to the vote, I'll ask the vote no.
And I believe there was two objections to it, the amendment, Tom.
Okay.
No, Patrick.
I just offered a chance to change it.
Patrick.
So this was a variance that was offered or brought before the planning commission. Last year it was reviewed by the common council and it was sent back, the variance was. Why wasn't the variance taken into consideration for this so that we wouldn't have to change the whole ordinance? I think the city's done wrong here to this gentleman and there has to be a way to fix it than to have one cog in the wheel that, or a flat tire that needs to be replaced that we need to fix this. Is there any way that we can fix the variance that was requested for this guy?
So I made a, I'm sorry, I made a motion at planning commission to approve the variance for this, to make this exception and it died due to a lack of second. And I think the discussion was held that if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, we need to change the ordinance so it's applied consistently. I, I felt differently at the time. So then, so then it wasn't sent back because it died of lack to, lack of a second and it was discussed to bring back an ordinance at the next planning commission meeting to address the height. That's how we became, went from the variance to the ordinance.
But this ordinance is ultimately going to allow this to happen and it, there was a variance requested beforehand. Is there any way to fix what is going on so that we don't have to wait another month on the ordinance so that we can get the variance approved?
The council can't approve a variance, correct?
Right. You, the, the ordinance provides that the planning commission is the body that hears special exceptions to the sign code, not the council.
So the commission could've approved a variance and council wouldn't have been able to overturn it, but-
Right.
But an ordinance change is recommendation from the commission to the council and then that's up to the council to change. Mr. Zachary?
In the end, if they would've, it sounds like if, if they would've said, hey, we're gonna change this, but in the meantime, let's, let's allow this to proceed. Since we're gonna change it, it's gonna be changed. Instead of holding up progress, let's allow, let's give them, him the variance to, to move forward and get this signed up. I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong, but it seems like that's how this could've been avoided. So right now, what we're looking at is we either make a motion and vote, or the motion to pass it the way the commission sent it to us, or we add an amendment that says it can be 10 feet unless there's a, a house structure within 100 feet, then it has to be eight feet. Which, again, I, I'm not sure how that makes a difference and it's been vetted out and talked about already. But what we're saying right now is in order for this to pass, we have to accept something that was already denied by the people who have been talking about this for months and months at this point. So we're being, from my understanding, this is the way government works. We are kind of held at bay or hostage if we wanted to try to push this forward unless we accept an amendment that has already been vetted, but one person wants it or maybe two people want it. But they're saying, well, we're not gonna pass it unless you do this, something that's already been vetted. So you're, you're absolutely right. We are learning quite fast about how government works. So I appreciate that. But I don't appreciate like the position we're being put in at this point in time. But if it's the only way that we can allow Mr. Haves to proceed forward, that's the decision we have to make. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Ross.
And again, my, my point is to clarify the ordinance all at once, which the amendment
I have a question for, for Mr. Kearns.
That's what the discussion, that's what the, excuse me, that's what the discussion has been about.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Was there any type of setback requirement in the previous sign ordinance for this district? Or this zoning?
So with regards to the old code, institutional zoning was not identified within the old sign code. So I would assume, and I, I haven't pulled the old zoning maps either, but I would assume that most of these institutional properties then fell under the, the residential zoning classifications. Many of the kind of office type uses I know were previously conditional uses in the zoning districts under the old zoning code. So again, I'm referencing the zoning code because the sign code regulates the districts of the zoning code. So without having the institutional district previously identified, I think they fell in the residential districts and they had a height requirement of 12 feet. So I think Mr. Haves has referenced that previous 12-foot requirement, which again was changed in 2019, or I'm sorry, the change began in 2019 with the sign code rewrite and then was adopted in July of 2021.
Thank you. So there, there was no setback requirement in the previous sign code. And to me, you know, this particular sign that, that has caused this issue and this discussion won't be anywhere near 100 feet to a residential building. And actually, it's, it's facing the roadway. It's not, it wouldn't be facing perpendicular to the roadway. So I'm just, if, if, if there's a, if, if there's, there's a, a thought need of that 100-foot setback, I, I don't see why that issue can't be brought up on a future agenda item for the planning commission. But to hold this particular item up just, just doesn't seem right to me. So, thank you.
So if I, if I may answer the question a little bit further, I've got the old sign code open. It appears that signs, freestanding signs did have to meet a five-foot setback from the property line. And it also references in a few of the districts, like the conservancy district as well as the agricultural district, that no ground sign shall be closer to the side or rear lot line than the height of the sign. So there, there was somewhat of a setback from the side yard, right, which could be an adjacent residential property that, that's not higher than the, the sign. So if the sign was 20 feet high, it then needed to meet a 20-foot side yard setback to the adjacent property. So there, there were setbacks in the previous code.
Okay, but you're, you're talking about setbacks that are, you know, five feet or up to 20 feet, but we're talking about 100-foot setback here, right? That's, that's quite the difference.
Right. I don't see anything within the old code that references larger setbacks from differing uses or differing zoning districts.
And again, I mean, this, this sign will be more than 100 feet away from any residential building, is my understanding. And if there's a desire to change, to change the ordinance or the setback, that, that issue could be brought up in future planning commission, correct, Mr. Kearns?
Yeah, it, it could be. I mean, you know, in, in answering some of the earlier questions raised, you know, a sign exception or a zoning variance- a sign exception or a zoning variance are typically the, the kind of one mechanism for relief from the code, and that's the, the first that's pursued by an applicant. Anybody, including staff, can make a recommendation, recommendation for an ordinance change. And in this case, based on feedback from the Plan Commission, staff implemented the ordinance change based on the conversation that occurred at Plan Commission rather than the applicant. But for the most part, when we're responding to requests, the sign exception or the variance are, are kind of the first two options for them to request relief. Because again, as it's been alluded to, to make a ordinance change based off of a certain situation or a certain scenario is not good practice. But if that ordinance change in the larger scheme of the entire city is appropriate, which I do feel in this case it is appropriate, because I've alluded to several other properties, you know, then I think it, it is appropriate. So I just wanted to mention that kind of procedure from a staff perspective when we're handling these types of requests.
Thank you, Kyle. Did I answer your questions, Ryan? Okay. Jake?
Thank you. I'll be quick, and then I, hopefully we can get this to a vote. So I, I did make a referral regarding the authority of the council to overturn different commissions, committees, et cetera, which in this case I would hope would have prevented this so that we could have overturned the decision to not allow that variance. But that'll be for discussion at whatever committee that goes to, I believe, legislative. But I do encourage my fellow council members here tonight to accept the compromise so that this can move forward. I don't want to word it as a lesson in government or whatever, but it is on the floor that we can compromise to move this forward. What's happened in the past and discussed is, is what happened, but tonight there's something we can take action on. Can you call for unanimous consent again, or is that against the rules? Do they need to withdraw their motion and make a new one?
Well, right now, we have the motion to adopt the ordinance as it was written. If someone wants to make a motion to amend that, they can. When we do unanimous consent, that's just to avoid the voting and, and, you know, but the, the motion can still be amended if someone wants to make that motion. So I guess you have to decide which motion you want to vote on.
So the person who made the original motion would have to amend it?
No, the, the, the motion belongs to the whole body right now, so anyone could do that.
So, so amendment could be made and a vote could be taken, and it doesn't need to be unanimous?
Right, to amend, right, to a simple amendment of a motion, right.
So amendment can be made, a vote can be taken on the amendment, and a majority vote would prevail, and that amendment would be, become the motion?
Right. You're, right, you're moving to amend the motion to say this, let's vote, let's vote on that amended motion, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, in that case, I would like to amend the motion to what has been proposed, which is the sign variance of 10 feet in this zoning district as long as it's not within 100 feet of a residential property.
We have a motion by Jake. Is there a second to that motion? Jake? No, no, we'll take care of that here shortly. But let's see if there's a second first. Because if it's not, if it's not second, then it, it fails. So we have a motion on the floor to amend the original motion, to make an amendment to the original motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a second. So let's let the clerk kind of. And then, why don't we, go ahead, Patrick.
If I vote for this, can I have it sent back to the commission to have a look at? Because they did bring up some very valid points, and it wasn't about just this sign. It was about possible future signs. They brought up some excellent points, and that's the reason that they went the way that they went.
Right, but, okay. But the, then the vote will not be unanimous, right? So
No, I'm saying I would vote for this, but can I make a referral back on this specific to the commission?
Sure, you could make a referral, yeah. And I think I misspoke when I'm, the vote will be whether to amend the motion or not, and then, then the vote on the, on the amended motion or the original motion if it doesn't pass. I got ahead of myself there. Sorry about that.
That's why I took it, I, no, you're right. So, yep, so there's clerks typing in. The motion is to, to amend the original motion, and based on your vote, we'll be deciding which motion we're gonna vote on after that. All right. Any further questions? Tom Scherri, do you understand the motion?
We're voting on the change to amend the
Your vote?
The 10-foot sign or 8-foot sign when 100 feet from a residential building, as Kyle kind of
That's correct.
Headed indicated, is that correct?
Correct. So, yeah, we're gonna vote on whether or not you want that to be the new motion.
Kyle, I see you raising your hand. Do you want to say something?
My, my question was similar on a point of clarification on the intent. Is it from, because I think the, Jake, I think who made the motion mentioned from the property, but is, I guess, was the intent from the actual building, a residential building, or is it from a residential property?
Whatever you advise, Mr. Kearns, that's whatever you're, you advise.
I think it was the residence when you originally spoke. The building.
Yes, that, I, I would concur that, yes. The measurement from the actual physical building, I think, is better than the property line.
And that's what
Thank you.
That's what we'll vote.
Correct, correct, building.
It is, I'm sorry, it is 100 feet from a residential building, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Tom?
Aye.
Scherri?
Aye.
That motion passed, eight A's, zero N's. So now we're back to, now this is gonna become the new motion, which is which is basically this motion from before.
Right.
If you've got it there. Okay. So everybody understand what this next motion, motion is? It's basically a revote.
That's a 100-foot, that's what, so it's 100-foot from a building, a residential building.
That is correct, Tom. Yes. Any further discussions? Please cast your ballots. Everybody voted already? Tom?
Aye.
And Scherri?
Aye.
And that motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Congratulations, Earl, you can put up your sign.
I got a question, so now it's on. When Stratford Sign calls me tomorrow morning and they want to email Redover for the sign, it's a go?
It's a go.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome, Earl. Have a good night.
Assumption I appreciate it, and the community will appreciate it too.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now moving on to, we still have more of the agenda. Item eight, consider for adoption the action of the standing committees of the Common Council as follows. Item A is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on January 4, 2022. Ms. Raoul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, January 4, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of Finance and Property Committee were present, with all of persons attending via remote. Also in attendance were all of persons, Veneman, all of persons, Delaney, all of persons, Zachar, Mayor Blazier, Lucille, interim fire chief, Ekis, division chief, Jason Zilk, Joling, Kyle Kearns, and Tim DeSorci. Item one, all of them. Meeting's ordered. Chairperson Raoul called the meeting ordered at 5, at 4:35. Item two, consider request from the fire department to purchase a life pack, ventilator, and IV pump from the Nacusa ambulance. It was moved by BNP, seconded by Raoul, to approve the purchase of a life pack, ventilator, and IV pump from the Nacusa ambulance for $23,850. The motion carried. Item three, preliminary discussion regarding the timeline and process for the 2023 budget. The committee discussed the budget process and ideas for improving the budget process. Finance Committee and Mayor, Director, Finance Director and Mayor will develop a budget timeline and present it at the finance and property committee meeting. Item four, audit of the bills, is moved by BNP, seconded by Raoul, to proof check number 10997 to 11313. That motion carried. Item five, set the next meeting date. The next meeting of the Finance Committee would be, is Tuesday, February 1, 2022, at 4:30 PM. Item six, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, parent one, parent E, Wisconsin statutes with reads, deliberating or negotiating purchasing properties, investing with public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee may discuss negotiations and strategy regarding a lease agreement for the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater for space in the Centralia Center. It was moved by BNP, seconded by Raoul, to go into closed session. Roll call vote resulted in the affirmative. Item seven, the committee will return to open session. BNP, as made by BNP, seconded by Raoul, return to open session. Roll call vote resulted in the affirmative. Review and approve a lease agreement for the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater for space in the Centralia Center. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Raoul. Approve a lease with the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater to the term of 30 months at $1,250 per month, and the lease area will include the storage area. And that passed. Item nine, was adjourned. It was moved by Raoul, seconded by BNP, to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting adjourned at 5:40 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I'll move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Raoul. We have a motion by Raoul. Seconded by Katna. Is there any further discussion on the report? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Uh, Ms. Raoul?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Evanson?
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion carried seven A's and one A. We are on to item B, Public Works Committee held on January 5. Ms. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Wednesday, January 5, 2022, in the third-floor conference room at City Hall and via remote video conference. Ryan Austin, Matt Zachar, and Patrick Delaney were in attendance. Others attending are listed below. Item number one, called the meeting to order. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two, review the traffic control study report for the intersection of Chestnut Street and 12th Street South. The engineering study titled Chestnut Street and 12th Street South dated 11/23/2021 was reviewed. Motion by Zachar, seconded by Austin, to install an always-stop sign at Chestnut Street and 12th Street South. Motion carried 3-0. Item number three, review speed study report for Chestnut Street between Hill Street and A Street South. The report was reviewed with no action. Item number four, review parking ordinance provisions. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Zachar, to approve the parking ordinance changes as presented, except the following. Keep ordinance 27.131A4A, that's D Street cul-de-sac. Remove ordinance provision 27.131A5I, that would be the East Grand at Dairy Queen. Remove 27.131A12B, Lee Street. And then, no change to 27.131C19 until more information is known. That's Lincoln Street. No change to 27.131E20, Prospect Buses at Emmanuel. Reduce permit parking along First Street Ave South from 10 permit stalls to five permit stalls, 27.132F6A. And then ordinances presented surrounding Lincoln High School to read on school days rather than Monday through Friday. That motion carried 3-0. Item number five, transportation utility update. An update was provided and discussed, and no action was taken. Item number six, review the December engineering and street department activities report. The reports were reviewed. Item number seven, review the snow removal ordinance and policy. The ordinance and policy was reviewed. The item is requested to be referred back to committee in February. Item number eight, review referral list. The referral list, we removed items five, 11, 12. The next meeting is scheduled for February 3, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Item number nine was adjournment. Motion by Zachar, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn at 7:35 PM. Now with that, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee holding out item number four.
We have a motion by Austin, seconded by Delaney, to hold out item four. Scherri?
I'd like to hold on to item two, Your Honor.
We have item two. Everybody good with that? And Scherri, did you have an item?
I was gonna say exactly what Tom did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're hiding, holding out items two and four. So on the balance of the report, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Uh, Ms. Raoul?
Aye.
And Ms. Evanson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight, eight, zero N's. We'll go with, in order, go with item two. Um, Ms. Raoul?
Yeah, Your Honor, I was gonna hold this out anyway, but I had just seen, and I, I haven't got to read it in its entirety, an email from our city attorney, and maybe she wants to speak to that first. I was gonna hold it out, as I said, anyway, but maybe she'd like to comment on it first before I would.
Uh, well
Or I, I can just go with what I want, want to say too, but 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 you had, you had an email there, didn't you, too?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I just, I think it speaks for itself in terms of, you know, those stop signs and, and when they should be placed and not, and it's, I just gave my opinion in terms of that faraway stop. According to the, the manual, our ordinance, and the recommendation of the city engineer, I just cautioned on, on that.
Yeah, yeah. And I would, I would go along with that. I, I did make a comment, I think, that night at the meeting, but I think it's, one of these, I think, again, that the, the two, two-way suffices, and I think that's where we should leave it at, and that would be, what my recommendation would be to do. I would
uh, what my recommendation would be to do. I would, uh, recommend that we leave it as a two-way, a movement, that we leave it as a two-way stop.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. We have, we have two on the speaking list already. Do you want to be put on there?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. All right, first one is Patrick.
I have a question for Sue. Did you watch this meeting?
Um, no, I did not.
Okay, so you don't know what happened at the meeting, but yet you're making a recommendation as to what happened at the meeting?
Well, I, I'm assuming that the four-way stop was going to be installed. Is that not the action that was taken at the meeting?
That is the action that was taken, but if you didn't watch what happened and the questions that were asked and the, uh,
Yeah, I, I talked with Joe Ickstead about the meeting, yes.
Did you talk with the, um, city safety supervisor?
Who is that?
Streets, the Streets Superintendent. Did you talk with him at all?
Um, Paul Lawler?
Yeah.
No, I talked to the person who, who's, and the ordinance is the one whose discretion and judgment you follow.
Okay, and, uh, what did Joe say about it?
Yeah, you, you can ask Joe.
Yes.
There we go.
Um, I am on the line. So the, the items that I spoke to Lucille about, uh, basically the same items that we had spoken about at the meeting. Uh, the, the contents of the discussion in that the engineering study that was prepared was done in conformance with the manual and uniform traffic control devices. And engineering judgment was applied to that. And it was followed through, uh, based on the ordinance and policy.
So when you write a recommendation, is it, this is the information I have? And you decide what to do with the information, or do you, um, how exactly do you come to that conclusion? How exactly are these reports put, being put together?
So there's guidance that's provided in the, in the manual that, that we're referencing. And that guidance, it's based upon various aspects of, of, um, the, the traffic and the intersection at hand, whatever's being looked at. So, um, the accident history is one of the qualifying criteria. Um, we did general observation, uh, at key points throughout the day to see, you know, if there were pedestrians present, if there were, uh, vehicles queuing to a significant degree that would impact, um, uh, or give an indication that an always-stop would be beneficial. We checked vision corners. We checked the eighty-fifth percentile speed. We checked traffic volumes. Uh, verified the road classifications, and all of those items, when reviewed, uh, together, determine if, if an always-stop is warranted. Is there a benefit to have an always-stop? There's always pros and cons with, um, whichever traffic control is warranted, and especially if, if you deploy a traffic control that's not warranted. And so you may see, uh, increased, uh, traffic accidents, um, increased speeds away from the intersection, uh, the noise that we talked about at the meeting, that might be increased as well because of the stopping and the accelerating. So there's, there's definitely, uh, pros and cons with each of them. But as a city engineer, I'm tasked with following the ordinance and the manual and applying, uh, professional judgment. And, um, so I have, I have to base my decision, uh, upon that guidance.
And after this discussion that we had that night, um, did you go to Sue, or did she come to you on this?
Isn't that relatable?
No, I, I kinda wanna have a feel for where Joe is at on this. Like, did he come to the city attorney asking, or did the city attorney contact him? I wanna know if Joe, okay, so after we had made the decision three to zero, uh, did you feel that it was right or wrong?
Well, the decision was against the recommendation, uh, based upon the data that was presented.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, Jake.
Thank you. Um, so I live right over here, and I've, I've spoken, my first, when this was first brought up, I've felt that it, sometimes I do see cars go fast down there. We walk that street often. Um, but I don't know if it warrants a four-way stop. I also talked to others that live around me, specifically those down there, and it was not received well. And there's stops at Eighth, Twelfth, Sixteenth, and when you get up to Highway fifty-four, Chestnut is used often as a through street, so if you put another stop there, I believe cars will find other ways to get there. I also picked a family member up from school over at Saint Vincent. Uh, that's a concern because there's a school there. The pickup is actually on Thirteenth Street in the back. So there's no pickup necessarily at that corner. Um, you'd see all the traffic. The cars are parked in that parking lot in the back at Thirteenth. So with all that, I, I don't think this is necessary. I'm sure this stemmed from a call originally of a resident who lives over there who feels cars are going too fast. I think if this passes and you put a stop sign there, you're gonna get even more calls. Because there's people who might not live over there that drive down that road that aren't gonna be happy, and I mean, that's where I stand on that. I, I can't see it going well if there is a stop sign there. I mean, traffic flow could be backed up. I, sometimes you might even see problems turning out of the road if it's busy coming off A Street, so I will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Cherry.
Thank you. Um, as I commented at the meeting that night, um, the recommendation, we, we put professionals in place, such as Joe Ickstead as engineer. Um, they did the study as our ordinance indicates. And, and then they vote, they voted to go against their own ordinance. Um, which was really surprising to me. Because as Joe indicated tonight, he has responsibilities to go according to what our policy indicates. And when the committees don't take into consideration of the expert, we find ourselves making or changing ordinances, which this wasn't even brought up to change ordinance, but, um, again, just because a few people commented on this or that, that we need to change everything, as I was getting to earlier. Which we need to listen to our experts that we put in these positions as Joe indicated that evening, um, and spoke again tonight. Um, you know, if, if there's an issue of cars going too fast, I mean, there's cars going past my house all the time. I'm not gonna say, oh, we need to put up more stop signs. I may contact the police department and say, could you please put a little bit higher police presence there? But, um, we need to follow our own ordinances and listen to the experts that we put in place for that. Um, so I will not be voting for this either. Thank you.
Jay.
Thank you. So this was my referral. I've had several complaints from the neighborhood, and I will tell you this, that these complaints go back to two thousand seventeen. It's, it's nothing new. It's, I, I can't tell you it's the same people over and over, but there's been issues up there, and what I'm hearing tonight is we have, I guess we've decided what's not gonna fix the problem, but we've had five years to fix the problem, or try to fix the problem. And I'm, I'm hearing no suggestions on what we can do. The issues are speed, um, noise, the amount of traffic's increasing. Um, so what are the solutions if it's not a stop sign, I guess I would ask? Um, the other thing I would ask is, we're talking about our experts, and I guess if the chief wouldn't mind commenting, I'm not, I'm not saying, I don't, I disagree with Joe. I, he went through his standards, did his, his due diligence, but I would like to hear from the police chief if we could, please.
Well, as I had said at the committee meeting, um, I know that there are standards and there is a manual that we follow in ordinances and, uh, the professional judgment of the, of the engineer. Um, I came out as not against the stop sign, but I, I had said that the stop sign, if put in place, wouldn't hurt. If it prevented one incident or one person from being struck by a car, a child at the crossing, things of that nature, I'm not against it. Um, I can't argue with, uh, the manual and things of that nature, but just as, you know, having been a police officer for thirty-three years, I think maybe I might have a little expertise in some places, and one of those things is public perception of, of speed on their streets, which we all know we get those calls. I do too. And, uh, you know, a lot of these people are looking for a solution. Is the stop sign the solution? I don't know. Uh, it won't hurt. But, uh, my recommendation, if anyone would ask me, is I would put the stop sign in.
Uh, thank you. Dean.
Actually, I could probably withdraw, because what I was gonna do is ask the chief to talk, because as I recall, that's pretty much what you just said. Now, I recalled you, you said at the meeting, so I was gonna ask the chief to talk, so. But I'm done. Thanks.
Jake.
Thank you. I, I agree with Jay. Something does need to be done. And I was thinking of this while he was speaking about other recommendations. So I drive down A Street every day um, to take my son to school, and when, about when you hit Culvers or that area, and I don't know the specific cross street, but there's a speed meter and, and a crossing guard that stand there, and, I mean, you can see the entire traffic flow when you're coming into this area, slow down, and it tells you your speed. And it stays slow for a period, and then it picks up like typical A Street traffic. And I think that's a really effective model. I mean, there's not another stoplight there. There's nothing slowing it down besides the meter telling you how fast you're going, and oftentimes the P D will sit there. If, um, and I think that's a good way to monitor. I know we have a speed wagon, and I've seen the speed, two speed wagons. I've seen them over there, and I'm, I'm not sure what data you gathered from that, but if we could have one of the permanent ones that's like on A Street, I think that would be a great first step, and then you're not stopping traffic, but you're slowing it, and hopefully that prevents some of the noise as well.
Uh, Matt.
Uh, just wanted to say, uh, since I've been on the council, you know, a lot of times we're being asked, or being told that this is the ordinance, this is what we do, but we're asking not to do it. Or this is what the ordinance, this is what we should do, and this is what we want, you know? We're gonna follow it. So there's times when we're being asked to follow ordinances, and when we're being asked to vote on not to follow ordinances. So I, I don't think it's just as straight up as saying we don't respect our, the people that are doing the work behind the scenes. Uh, you know, when I came to this decision, it was, uh, very, you know, from my heart, it was, people are saying there's a lot of kids coming through here, and it's gonna be bad if a kid gets killed because cars are flying through here, and they see it happening. And then, and talking with the chief, yeah, there, it, it is dangerous there, but just because it's, people tend to fly through that area trying to get to A Street faster. Um, stop signs usually make them slow down or, you know, stop. Uh, so it was a decision that we came to through, after much consideration and conversation. It wasn't just, uh, willy-nilly, so. Um, thank you.
All right, that's the list. We had, oh, sorry, Jake.
Yes.
I'll get to next, Cherry.
I would just, uh, so there's no motion on the floor. Am I able to amend what would be in the minutes?
You can make whatever motion you want, as long as it's on that item.
Okay, thank you. And so I do agree that something does need to be done. Um, I think this could be a step before possible stop sign. But that we, I'll make a motion that we place a speed meter, or whatever the, is that the correct terminology? Okay, I'll make a motion that we place a radar sign at Twelfth and Chestnut. Um, one facing both ways, so that traffic coming both ways can see how fast they're going. Uh, so hopefully that will slow traffic and alleviate this issue. And hopefully we can put that in place, and it, it takes care of the problem before we have to put a full stop sign in. But my motion be that we place a radar sign both directions on Chestnut and Twelfth.
Do you want both of the radar boards on there, or are you talking like on A Street? Are you talking to police radar boards?
No, I'm talking a permanent standing one, like one on A Street. Yep.
Okay.
It is, but I mean, what, what price do you put on this? I mean, it was mentioned a kid getting hit and killed. I, I don't know where you put the price, but I, I can tell you, you know, there's costs to having traffic slow down and, and move forward and possibly take other directions too. I, I don't think I can really put a price on, on this, but.
So we have, currently we have a motion on the floor to, uh, install fixed radar signs at the intersection of Twelfth and Chestnut. Um, so that's the motion. Is there a second to that motion? Seeing none, that motion fails. Uh, Cherry.
Me, I just have a question for Joe. I know it's in our packet, um, the, the whole study, um, that Joe has put together, the five pages, or six pages of that. And I mean, I know you guys talking about the traffic going fast and kids getting killed and that, but, I mean, that hasn't happened. And according to the, the accident, um, it was two thousand twenty that a vehicle failed to stop and hit a pedestrian, but that, I mean, I don't wanna say that isn't important, but, um, that was one in, since two thousand sixteen. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, I, I, where I have a hill in front of my house, and cars are going by here about forty-five, forty miles an hour. And, I mean, so if I want a study done and to put a, a stop sign there or permanent, um, you know, according to the traffic count, it says a hundred and seventy-nine vehicles. That was peak per hour. And thirty-two miles an hour, which, I mean, speed limit is twenty-five. Most people speed a little bit, but I just, I, I just, I don't know, I just, I can't vote for that. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jay.
Thank you. So the, the, the sign was discussed, the radar sign, or whatever they call it. Um, and I don't, chief or Joe could address that issue. Again, I think that's a great idea. But here we are, you know, five years into this, um, and now we're coming up with solutions now. I would not, I, I'm not sure that this stop sign's gonna work. And do everything we want it to do, but we have to do something. Um, I guess for now, if we could get the chief or Joe Ickstead, maybe just to mention the cost and what maintenance is involved with this?
Uh, we're talking about the radar signs now?
Yep, the little ones, like the one on the crossing of Grove.
Right, uh, well, that one was bought, it was before my time, but I believe it was bought by a grant, right? Um, and that one would be can, very, very expensive, without being able to price it, I know. Um, we have a portable speed radar sign that's, I don't know, about sixteen by sixteen that we move around town. That's battery powered, so we don't normally field that during the winter time because it just doesn't last. But that alone, just being the portable battery-powered one, we paid close to three thousand dollars for it. Uh, they have a couple permanent ones installed facing, uh, both, you know, directions of traffic. Just a roundabout guess without really doing a price check would be, you're looking at about maybe ten grand just for the hardware, and that would have to be wired in that for a permanent supply because you can't use batteries on those, et cetera. So it would be pretty pricey. What price do you put on something like this? But, you know, in the summer months, we could put up the portable one, but like I said, we can't use it in the winter time because it would just last a day and be done. So.
If, if I could interject?
Yes, please, Joe.
Briefly here. Um, so yeah, uh, police chief is, is accurate as far as the cost, I mean, approximately, um, you know, it likely fall in the range of fifteen to twenty thousand, uh, uh, cost all in with the radar display. It'd be about ten thousand just, just for the equipment. Um, so there is some ongoing maintenance there, but I guess it, it does kinda circle back to what the actual issue is that we're trying to resolve, because that's, we deploy solutions, um, the actual issue is that we're trying to resolve, because that's, we deploy solutions to fix, you know, a defined problem. And so if it's pedestrian safety, well, that's something we should maybe take a closer look at. Speed, although, you know, that's a perceived issue here with this, with this situation, the speed counts that we had, the eighty-five percentile was thirty-two miles an hour, that's not uncommon for streets in the city of Rapids. In fact, I think off the radar trailer, I think Police Chief mentioned at the meeting twenty-six miles per hour, twenty-eight miles per hour, something in that ballpark. So, speed doesn't appear to be a major issue. Certainly, if you couple things like when school gets out and there's more pedestrian traffic around the school property, perhaps crossing Chestnut Street, certainly things that, you know, making sure that the crosswalk paint is freshened up every year, maybe even enhancing that further. And as Sherry mentioned, the one pedestrian that was hit in recent traffic records was in 2020, and it was on the approach, on the 12th Street approach, the side that had a stop sign. They failed to stop at the stop sign. And so adding stop signs, I guess the only point I'm trying to make there is that adding stop signs may not necessarily solve a problem that, you know, that we're trying to fix. And I guess making sure that we know exactly what the problem is, is a great step in making sure that we deploy the right solution.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
And thanks, Joe. I agree a hundred percent. A lot of times, I mean, if you're saying that, and I can't believe it's a speed issue, but I'd be interested to know how many tickets, if the police know that this is an issue, how many tickets had been issued recently in that area if they know that it's a problem? Or if it is, if they believe that it's speed, why don't we nip it in the bud and have an extra police presence there? Because as we all drive, if you know that police are sitting there and they're stopping people and the people that are speeding, they're gonna go down a different road. Well, you know, then you're gonna have a different avenue, but we need to figure out what the issue is, just like Joe said. If it's speed, then we have a police department, they could monitor that more. And then if you guys were thinking of erecting permanent signs, we'd have to look at what our ordinance says, because if you have flashing speed, I mean, there's a lot of residential houses right there. So I guess I'm just, I'm just confused. Thank you.
Patrick?
I think eight accidents in four years is quite a few accidents. And if you look at the study that engineering had sent, a lot of them are very, they're right on the line as far as a two-way stop and a four-way stop. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Public Works Committee, item number two, as presented.
So we have a motion and a second by Zachary to approve the report as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots.
Oh.
Ms. Evanson?
No.
That motion carried five As, three Nays. And it'll come back next month, correct? No, no, that's traffic, so. I don't know.
Just a quick motion, does that have to change our ordinance then?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
So would that ordinance need to come?
So.
Or? Yes, so the, an ordinance will be brought back next month.
Before the, so the stop signs won't be erected until we decide on that, correct?
Pass the ordinance, correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay, we are on to item, was it, was it four that was held out?
Correct.
Good, Ms. Raoul, item four.
Mr. Austin.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we had, looks like accidentally omitted, one of the changes to the presented parking ordinance changes on number four. It was number twenty-seven point one-three-one-A twelve-H, which was Lincoln Street, the east side from P Street to a hundred feet south of P Street. That location is currently not signed, but is covered under ordinance, and we decided at committee to eliminate that particular ordinance. Would like that put into the minutes. So I'll make a motion to do so.
You're striking H, correct?
Correct.
Sounds good, we have a motion and a second. So then you want it approved also as presented?
Yes.
Striking H, which was omitted from the report. Okay. Nope, you're good. Tell me when you're ready.
What's going on? I'm sorry, I'm lost.
So, on the report, item number four, there was an item missing from the report. And if Ryan, you wanna restate what that item is?
Sure, it's item number twenty-seven point one-three-one-A twelve-H. That's page seven.
And we, and you guys talked about that at the meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, then I understand what you're talking about. You don't have to reread it. Thank you.
Yep, it was just omitted from the report.
Okay, yep.
You ready? So we have a motion and a second to adopt the report as presented with item that was called out, item H, to be struck out also. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Delaney? Thank you. Ms. Raoul?
Hi.
And Ms. Evanson?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was an I, that was an I, correct? Sherry?
Yes, yes, sorry.
No problem. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays.
Are you guys taking a break?
Do we need to take one? Yeah, it looks like a few people wanna take five. Yeah?
Okay.
Let's take five minutes.
We're gonna take five, Tom.
I'm just gonna plug my computer in.
Move on to item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held January tenth. Mr. Bemke?
Thank you. The Human Resource meeting was held January tenth at 5:00 PM. All members were present or online. A list of others in attendance are in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 5:08 PM. Item number two was to discuss and consider for approval a request from Mayor Blazer for an organizational restructure of the Public Works Department. There was a motion by Veneman, seconded by Bemke, to approve the request from Mayor Blazer for an organizational restructure of the Public Works Department. Motion carried two to one. Item three was discuss and consider for approval the proposed changes to an attendance and punctuality policy. Motion made by Evanson, seconded by Veneman to approve the proposed changes to the attendance and punctuality policy. Motion carried three zero. Item number four, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section one-nine point eight-five-one-E Wisconsin statute, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. A, in closed session, the committee will discuss negotiation bargaining strategy regarding labor negotiations with IAAF and WRPPA, and may discuss tentative labor agreements with said units. B, the committee may return to go into open session or adjourn in closed session. The committee did not go into closed session. There was an update provided by Attorney Schill for labor negotiations. No action was taken. At 5:28 PM, there was a motion made by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to adjourn, and the motion carried three zero. And that's my report. I'll submit for approval. Thank you.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Bemke, seconded by Delaney.
I would like to hold out item number two.
And holding out item number two. Any further discussion on the balance of the report, holding out item two? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Raoul?
Hi.
And Ms. Evanson?
Hi.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Item number two. Ms. Evanson?
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate again, I know it's a done deal, but I still don't believe that the city's long-term goals will be brought together with the departments running independently of themselves. And I still would just like to know that I vote no with eliminating Director Public Works position. Thank you.
So we have, wasn't there a motion?
No.
I thought Bemke made a motion.
No, but I will. I'll make a motion to approve item, item number two in the, from the Human Resource Report.
So we have a motion and a second by Austin. Is there any further discussion?
That's approve item two?
Correct.
Okay.
Please cast your ballots. Try three or four times, Patrick? New battery's coming. Mr. Raoul?
No.
And Ms. Evanson?
No.
That motion carried five As, three Nays. And we are moving on to item number nine, reports of other committees, commission boards, and departmental reports. There are a lot of library reports. They've been pretty active, Mr. Austin. What are your comments, wishes? We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Austin. Just beat you a little bit, Sherry. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Right, to place him on file, yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Raoul.
Yeah, I just, just to make a comment on, and then we'll place him on file, I guess, so, of the, on the zoning board of appeals, item two. Not, maybe that, not necessarily with maybe the end result of what took place, but, again, it's that, at least as I see this anyway, staff summarized the request and reported on it, recommended the denial of the request due to the standards of review not being met. And then also within that, it's, I have to what is said here without the approved building permit and that. Those things, for one, put the zoning board in a spot on what to do in these cases where this is what happened, it has in others in the past anyway, but no getting that permit and then getting if it meets requirements or not, and the work goes ahead, it gets to the point of denying after the fact. I know I've talked about this before, and it's something that we have to stress. We want to make our properties look decent in the city, for those people that will all do that, great. But there are also rules that we have and agrees we have to rule, make things, make sure that they're all being right. And that's the appropriate permanent stakeout. I don't think that is too much to ask. And I'd just like to, just to be kind of vague to the zoning board of appeals, that I don't think it's too much for them in the future to deny that, even if the work has been done. And that would be that the work would have to be taken out. These builders know what the rules are, or they should. High time passed, and we have to nurse them along all the time. That's why we have the bullet points. That's why we have the different departments. That's why we have the people upstairs to answer the questions. An old movie said, just don't fall away. Dial this number to get the answer. Most ain't old enough to guess which movie it was, but anyway. Or you can just go down to City Hall and get the answer directly. Let's just, we're gonna place these on file as we always do. Looking them over, just because, just, you know, gets to the point that I actually had made a note here that I'd make the same comments if somebody made this look like the Taj Mahal. They got to the point that, say no, you'd have to tear it down and take it out. Rules and routes to go through to do something. Exceptions can't be made. Variances can be made. Misses have to be taken out. Many times or not, many times we've let it go, in this case, the... Many times we've let it go. In this case, uh, feels, uh, board was three to two, so it's best for one. So I'll let it go with that tonight and, uh, we'll put it on file. Uh, but just, uh, I guess it's a frustrating thing. I've talked about it before. I think it's something for all all the persons to keep in mind. And as it is stated, I think it's something for the zoning board of appeals to keep in mind that those things can be, because somebody did this or whatever, and it becomes automatic to be done, to be passed through. People don't like that. But I guess if they are made not to like it, others then may follow the rules and go with what the rules are. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Uh, Ms. Raum?
Hi.
And Ms. Evanson?
Hi.
Thank you. That motion carried seven As, one Nay. And we're on to item ten, referrals to committee. Anybody have any? I, um, Ms. Raum, for your finance committee, um, Police and Fire will have a referral for funding or to, for a, a bal- a fund transfer for hiring the fire chief. They'll have a request for you to to move money from contingency to their their, and I'll, I'll forward information on, uh, the different proposals, and then I think this, this committee, or there was a report in your packet here from them, and, but I'll have that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I see Mr. Delaney.
First of all, I'd like to, uh, say that over the past couple of months, we've seen the heads of department save quite a bit of money to the city. Last month, Paul Ballard saved right around ten thousand dollars, and this month, uh, Chief Ekis saved nearly thirty thousand dollars for equipment that, uh, we need. So I just wanted to say a great job on that. Um, my referral is for, um, the planning commission. I'd like to send back the item number six that we had and have them review that and make changes as necessary. Strongly encouraged.
Thank you. Um, Jake?
Thank you. First referral is for the Public Works Committee. Uh, if we could put on their consideration for radar signs on Twelfth and Chestnut. I understand the direction right now is stop signs, but if we can have that conversation, go over that again, that'd be appreciated. Second referral is for the Legislative Committee. I sent this to the clerk as well. I would like a review of the common council's authority over committee boards and commissions that are within the city government. Uh, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that these minutes come to us and we spend a good part of our agenda going over them, but we have no authority to overturn them. And that's why I voted no on the rest of the reports from these committees. I think as the elected officials, if something comes to us, and this would have prevented a problem that we had earlier tonight, too, when something comes to us and it wasn't the right decision made by them, we should be able to overturn that. In my mind, that's how government works, that the elected officials can do that. But that seems not to be the case. So I would like that reviewed. Again, that's to the city clerk and for the Legislative Committee.
Yeah.
I have something, Mayor, as well.
Go ahead.
Um, and I don't know exactly who this would go to. Um, I did get a couple calls regarding, um, the city transportation system. Um, I know that, and I dug into some stuff, but I couldn't find a whole lot about it. I know we have the Kansas Rapid City cab service, and I, I know it's independently run, and they get grant money for that. But how much city money does it get? I, I guess there were used to be three cab services. One has health issues, is not. Um, and he, there were a couple people were complaining, um, because we don't have enough cabs for the number of people that need cabs. And I explained, you know, I know that the independent, you know, can't make people have a cab service, but I just didn't know if there was, um, somebody, and I, and I know I, is it Jim Brown, I believe? Um, but I didn't know if, is that, do we oversee anything regarding that or anything?
I think, Tim?
Mayor, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Yes, this is Tim, associate finance director. Um, yes, we have a, uh, contract with, uh, River City Cab, which was run by, you know, or overseen by, uh, Jim Brown. And that's through a, a grant through the Wisconsin D O T, which is also fed through the federal government. So, yeah, if you have any questions or concerns or any information that you want concerning that, please reach out to me or Karen Tim. We'll be happy to answer those questions.
Thanks, Tim. Um, Mayor, I do have another referral. I just wanted, um, on the H R committee. I haven't heard anything regarding the Carlson-Etman, um, job process of how that's going. Um, I'd like that noted on an agenda, and also what the financial impact is, um, eliminating the public work director position, because I'm assuming when the study was conducted, um, a lot of the job descriptions, um, indicated that they reported to or whatever the public work director. So is there a financial impact on changing all of that? I'd like to know what that is, and then what the cost is. Um, and the pro- I guess where the, where the, where is the process in right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? My computer died, so we're on to item eleven, adjournment. What are your wishes? Jake, did you, I'm sorry, did you have a request to speak?
I was just going to comment on the the cab thing because I've been on the committee that's approved the contract with them. I mean, my understanding was we award them the grant money and then they operate independently. We don't have control over complaints or employees or anything like, I, that was, because this came up before.
Okay, I just thought of that. I just thought I remember seeing your, your request to speak. But, yeah, and Tim would definitely have some information to, to provide Sherry and anybody else on on how that operates. But, uh, so we're on to adjournment. We have a motion by. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Um, Dean, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody oppose? All right, everybody have a good night. Thank you very much.